Unmute them, unmute themselves. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Veronica, Veronica, can I have a roll call for attendance, please?
Yes, Ms. Santiago?
Present.
Ms. Jimenez? Ms. Pfarro? Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia? Ms. Carlyle?
Present.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
There's four members present and three absent.
Okay. Uh, next, um, motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting on June third, two thousand twenty-one. Make a motion.
I make a motion to set the meeting minutes.
And I second the mo- minutes.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll move on. Um, we'll move on to public comment. Any, Veronica, do we have any public comments?
Not tonight.
None? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to presentations. We have a presentation for Equity in Action.
Great, and I will go ahead and, um, introduce our, um, Equity and Diversity Excellence Officer, Dr. Erin Jennings. And but before I do, I do want to acknowledge that, um, today was our second day of school. And we're, we were just thrilled to have all of our students back, all of our teachers back. And there was just a lot of excitement in the air. Um, we had a very smooth two days and we're just thankful and grateful. And, um, we've come a long ways and, um, was a beautiful two days. Our students and staff have tomorrow off, so, um, we hope that everyone enjoys their Labor Day. So with that, though, I'm going to introduce Dr. Erin Jennings. And he's been with us almost, I don't know, almost a year. It's been a fast year and, um, he's done amazing work and he's going to provide an update. And so Erin, turn it over to you.
Thanks, Doc. Um, I think October the nineteenth would be one year for me. It feels like I've been here longer for some reason, but, um, I haven't looked back. I am extremely delighted to, um, present to you all, um, my Equity in Action update presentation. Give me two seconds, computer's moving a little bit slow. Okay, here it is. Great, so I'm pleased presentation is entitled Equity in Action. I will do my best not to be before you long, but I just want to share with you all. Um, I have an overview, just a quick two-point overview, give you all an update of the equity audit. And then from the equity audit, sharing what's next, which is movement towards internal coherence within our school district. So I just want to remind you all of my why. Um, this work that we do, um, is not for the faint of heart. Um, and it's challenging. And there are times when you need reminders put before you. The photo that's embossed on the back is the photo I've had on my laptop, um, since I started as a professional. Faces of black and brown students, um, to remind me of why I'm doing this work. When the days, it's great days and when I have low days. Um, the bottom picture that's on the left-hand side, my left, your right, is the backdrop that's on my current desktop. And as I said, on October the nineteenth, it'll be one year, my one-year anniversary here. It will also be one year that I've had this same photo on my desktop to remind me why I get up every day and do the work I do for Chelsea Public School students. So that being said, I wanted to share with you all our equity audit journey. This journey started in March, April. Um, and that's when we assembled, uh, district leadership team, uh, district team for our equity audit. And we chose our equity audit focus areas. Moving from there in May, with the group, we assembled the seven focus group questions and also the topics that we were going to lean into to find insight and data. In June, we captured our current state, um, via, um, data gathering, which was focused on our focus groups, surveys, and district data. Moving into July, we leaned into our root cause analysis with the Leadership Academy team to help us analyze the, um, the current data from the focus group surveys, um, focus groups and artifact collection. Um, many of you participated in those focus groups and surveys. Then moving into August, we leaned into the plan of action. Um, our collective purpose was set. We developed a problem of practice and even leaning to our theory of change. And I like to say, um, the next frontier, um, evoking Star Trek lovers, um, is planning a district-wide, um, equity, um, and excellence plan. Now, please note, this plan would be purely aligned with Dr. Beta's strategic plan and other priorities in our district. Also, excuse me. I also, hey, my computer is acting a little funny. I also want to acknowledge, um, the committee members, um, who worked tirelessly, um, with me, um, to labor over, um, not only the data, but co-crafting and focused group questions, uh, and, and deep dipping, dipping into their network of, of Chelsea Public Schools to ensure that every voice, every person, every family, um, was represented in our data collection phase. I also want to elevate, um, the Equity Audit Committee plus Dr. Beta's Cabinet, um, Met Messina, Christina, um, DeColly, um, and Katie, um, who also add it to our action planning phase of our equity audit. Now leaning into the data collection, we had, um, approximately seven focus groups. Focus group for students, students who predominantly spoke Spanish, families, families who were Spanish-speaking, teachers and non-instructional staff, school and district leaders, as well as community members and parents. Roughly about sixty individuals that we had in focus groups. We collected that data as well as surveys and district data. So the equity audit is based out of this information. That being said, I'm now going to move into, um, providing highlights of our equity audit findings. Um, once again, please note, these are highlights. Um, the equity, the, the actual equity audit itself is forthcoming, um, in its entirety. But I just wanted to elevate some of the highlights. As you see, theme one, culture competency, discussion of race and identity. You see theme two, three, and going down to seven. These were themes that resonated within the data that I want to highlight. I will, um, because of the time constraints, I will only, um, uh, lean into theme one, theme two, and theme three, leaning, leaning into the data. But I will also acknowledge, um, pedagogy opportunities to influence district directions, leadership and discipline, as well as personnel, all right? So the first thing, culture competency, discussions of race and identity. This, um, theme focused on how often race and identity, um, were discussed in classrooms or covered in learning materials. Below you see sub-themes that elevated itself from the data. These sub-themes were appreciation, positive coverage of race and identity from the school district, coverage of hardships and atrocities, more, um, a need for more discussions. I'm, I'm also going to, um, dive deeper in the more systemic focus and coverage needed. But before I do that, I also want to elevate a disparate, um, racial coverage. Once again, these were themes, um, that were elevated, um, that, that, um, from the data itself under culture competency and discussion of race and identity. I'm going to lean more into, um, systemic focus and coverage needed. As you can see, um, one, um, family member, um, one person and who were in the family member focus group said, "I wish the whole school district could benefit from that Camino's program and appreciate that our community is made up of so many different cultures." I think from my experience, CPS does a great job addressing culture and the multicultural, um, plurality of our, in our city. I don't think CPS does a good job of addressing race. Once again, this was elevated, this was, uh, um, one, highlight of one quote from the focus group for this section. Theme two, culture competency, um, culture responsive learning environment. This theme, this focus group, this set of questions, um, focus on school environments that affirm and center the strengths and, and learning needs of students, particularly the multicultural, multilingual, um, multilingual students. Four themes that elevated itself, more cultural responsiveness, staff need more skills, promising practices to build upon, which means we, the district, have promising practices and we need to build upon those and inadvertently perpetuating, um, inequities. So there's a lot of, um, words on the screen, I'm going to read the two quotes for you. This is, um, both of these quotes are from students who are in the students' focus group, all right? Quote one, "It's drawn to me when I walk down the halls and I happen to hear someone who isn't black use the N-word so casually. It just rose off the tongue. It bothers me a lot. It happens so often that it's like people are desensitized to it." The last time I remember hearing someone say the N-word in front of a teacher, I can't really say a teacher reacted, or if they did, it wasn't as big as it should have been. Question two, quote two. "I agree that lots of adults allow students to get off the hook when they're using racial slurs to insult people about their skin color or where they were born. It sucks to see an adult witness it and not do anything to stop it or make them aware that what they're doing is wrong and they should be punished for it. It's not okay in any way, especially when it comes to anyone's backstory." Once again, these were student voices that we're elevating. Themes, still, um, theme two. A teacher or non-instructional staff member shared this in their focus group. "We've made a real effort to make sure that our libraries have diverse texts, but it's not just about what books we have, but how we teach them. And I'm afraid that that won't have, have, um, excuse me, and I'm afraid that we won't have more PD about culturally responsive teaching." Theme three, focus on pedagogy. And what it is, we lean into, um, examining data to inform practice and support all students. How well the dish, how well the school and district is doing such a thing. There were two points to elevate. One, there's room for improvement, and then also a critique on student achievement. Once again, these are highlights, um, from the data. Theme four, family engagement, communication with families. This focus on communicating with families, um, seeking to learn what messages are conveyed and what methods of communication is effective, um, for them, are effective for them. Four things I want to elevate, two I want to go deeper in. One is a balance of positive versus negative message communicated, avenues, platforms, and approaches where messages are conveyed, an emphasis that relationships are key, and also the language barrier, language barriers. I want to elevate two student voices for you all. Teachers don't call home to give a positive notice, but more for negative thoughts and not what we do, not when we do something right. The second quote. "I wish I could see them calling my parents for my right grades. Would be nice, would be very nice to have birthday celebrations, food events, bringing student, bringing friends to my events and showing them my accomplishments." Students are keenly aware of the positive and negative messages are communicated to their families. Another student. "Teachers seem to think that when they call home about behavior issues, I'm a person, if you talk to me one-on-one, we're good, but I don't know why you have to go to my parents. When I come back to the school after, I don't like the teachers." Excuse me, "When I come back to the school after that, I don't like the teachers. And I have some friends who don't even want to go home after somebody calls home." For a lot of students, it just makes things worse. People just smile, but you never know what they're going through. Or, so I feel like teachers could do more, like get closer to students and have a relationship with them. At this, um, at the marker of relationship, I do, I, I do want to do a shameless plug of, um, Dr. Beta's theme of that we as Chelsea Public Schools, um, all staff, all teachers will get to know our students by name, strength, and story. Continue on the theme family engagement, relationship is key. A school or district leader shared this from the focus group. Communication needs to happen at all levels. I see it happening with social workers, with social work, assistant principals, principals, sitting in meetings. I see that there are many teachers who are not comfortable calling parents. Or they quick to say, um, "Have the parent liaison make the call," or "Have the council make the call." No, the parent wants to hear from you. Theme five, opportunities to influence district decisions. Focus group participants and service respondents were asked whether they felt they have an avenue to express opinions to the district about how schools are run and whether the district would take action based on their opinions. Four themes were elevated, yes, clear paths to voice opinion. Point two, maybe, it depends, no, cannot share opinion. The last one, resulting action being taken by the district. Theme six, relationships and discipline. Focus group participants and service respondents were asked about the, the teachers and staff's approach to building relationships with students in a deep and meaningful manner. Four themes that elevated itself, um, stu- staff extending concerted effort to build relationships. Kudos to our staff. Need better or more attention to relationships. Staff training and support. And that there are promising practices that the district is currently engaged in. Theme seven, last but not least, personnel, which focus on recruiting, hiring, retention, and promoting a diverse staff that is reflective of the demographic diversity of Chelsea. Once again, four themes elevated itself, yes, ra- racial match is important. Yes, culture responsive teaching and respect are more important. Ineffective efforts are being engaged, and at the same time, we do have positive developments that are occurring right now. So what's next? What's next is, um, internal coherence through common understanding and language. How do we get there? We get there through professional development. I'm happy to share, um, with Dr. Beta's approval that the district, the entire school district, every school leader, every district leader, um, will be going through the Leadership Academy Equity, um, Diversity and Excellence, um, professional development this entire school year. Um, on August the thirty-first, um, our schools, all of our schools went through their first round of, um, of equity training with the Leadership Academy. That being said, for this year, um, our high school will get, um, all staff, um, training, professional development. The admin team will get five two-hour sessions of, of, of Leadership Academy equity training. Um, the, uh, admin for all of our schools across our district will do the same. We will even have, um, five two-hour sessions for our district leadership team, as well as, yes, our central office. So our entire school district, teachers, social workers, staff, you name it, even central office staff will be going through Leadership Academy professional development this year. This is the common language, this is the common understanding, this is the shared language and shared understanding that we need as a district. And I also want to highlight that there were a couple of areas where I shared from the, um, quotes that said, "Staff need more training, we all need more training." And we wanted to honor them, honor the, their, those, um, voices. Lastly, um, District-wide multi-year e- equity and excellence plan is what's the next phase of this equity audit. Um, based of this strategic plan will be based on the equity audit, um, Dr. Beta's strategic plan, and it will be a collaborative and living document. Um, my approach to completing the equity audit with Leadership Academy was to ensure that it was a collaborative document, um, that everyone has their hands, everyone sees ownership and, and stake in this work. Um, I will do the same thing for this strategic plan, that everyone will see themselves, see their roles a part of it. Um, just, I wanted to elevate just three, three key initiatives, um, for this year. This is not all the initiative, but just three that's more to, um, bring to your attention. One, that, um, um, I will help with the aid of one BIPOC group that we have, um, created at the high school to help establish BIPOC affinity spaces at each of our schools. I think it's so important for, um, our educators of color. Um, this also, um, works towards our goal of retention and could very well be a great recruiting tool. Our second, um, marker for key initiative, um, reestablish our relationship and improve with, um, Chelsea Public, um, Police Department, as well as, um, as well, um, as Chelsea Public Schools, um, focusing on the, the relatedness relationship of our, um, SROs. I am a firm believer, um, we as, as a community here in Chelsea, we're one point two square miles of a city. It's imperative that our SROs, that CPD, know our students by name, strength, and story, um, as well as it's imperative that our students know CPD, our SROs, by name, strength, and story as well. Um, we're in a community where we literally, um, live on top of each other, and so we need to know each other. Um, I must admit, as a black male who lived in St. Louis and Ferguson during this time, I see, I see reason, I see, um, reason for us to make sure that we be intentional, that I, as a district equity officer, be intentional about building a relationship with our police department and our students. And then last but certainly not least, is the continued cross-district equity, diverse, and excellence integration. Um, a joy that I have about the work that I'm able to lead here for our school district is that I get to work across the district with other rock stars, um, of department heads and leads, and even across our cabinet. And it's a great joy, um, to work alongside of them, um, having the equity lens and, um, and, and advancing, um, for our students. Any questions? And I'm going to stop sharing because I would love to see your faces.
Well, thank you very much, Erin. That was an awesome presentation you got to us. Very good job. I'm glad you reached out to the community and to the students. Um, you know, the students have their opinions on different things, but just good, we want to hear from the students. But one of the comments I understood was that if he's reaching out to the teacher and they take care of the problem, why do they have to reach out to the parents? But let's remember one thing. If something happens in the meanwhile and the parents will turn around and say, "Well, why didn't I know about this?" So you have to reach out to the parents too, I feel. Thank you.
Ms. Jimenez and Ms. Lance?
Yeah, thank you, and, uh, I'm sorry I'm late. I, I was facilitating a work event and, um, went way over, so I apologize for that. Um, just wanted to say, I walked into the words BIPOC affinity spaces and my face lit up. Um, so I'm, I'm really sorry that I missed the, the, kind of the rest of the presentation. Um, I'm going to be watching the video and, uh, going over the slides later tonight because this is so, so, so important. And I just wanted to, to say that I'm just so excited to see the fruits of this labor that I know you've been working on for so long, um, you know, be presented to us. So, so thank you, thank you so much for all the work that you've been doing.
Yes, sir. I'm, I'm excited to even share more of the work that we collectively are doing. I, I have to admit, I, I work very intimately close with every member of the cabinet. Um, and it's not just me carrying, carrying this banner. Um, this is just not, uh, um, the thing for right now, but this is the thing. And I'm delighted that, um, the team that Dr. Beta has assembled. We all understand that and are heading in the right direction. Thank you so very much, Ms. Jimenez. Ms. Velez?
Thank you, Dr. Jennings. Um, so now that this audit is over, I just want to know if, um, the team will continue to meet, um, to make sure that the work is being done, um, because we've got to be held accountable, right? Because it's great that we come up with a plan, but is it being implemented? So I wanted to know that, um. And anything with my students that I hear is, it always gets me and nudges my heart and, and it's true, right? So as an early childhood educator, we're, we're told, oh, you know, look at the positive behavior and ignore the negative. But then as the students get older, the teachers are calling for that negative behavior and they're not getting the positive behavior. So, you know, it's so true, what the student says is like, hello, can you call and say I did something, you know? Um, parents are tired, they're working so much. And when you pick up the phone, you don't want to hear anything. And then they're going to lash out at their stu- at their child. Most of them probably don't want to do it, but they're so tired and overwhelmed, they just don't know what to do. So that creates, you know, chaos at the house. If, because if that child says you're going to call and make things worse, it's like, hello, listen. So teachers, administrator staff, you know, sometimes we have to take a step back and really listen to the child and see what's going on, what's behind the behavior. You know, because a lot of things could be avoided and a lot of great relationships could build. And I feel that if we're going to be in, as one, united, school committee needs to be brought into these trainings as well.
Yes, ma'am.
Because, you know, it's not going to work. We need to know, we need to see the vision of what the district, where it's going to. Um, I think most of us here, we do support it and we love it, but we should be part of that journey as well, as far as the trainings, maybe during our, um, retreats have a little something for us. Um, you know, because I think it will be great and it will just align everything to what we're trying to do here. And that's it from me. Thank you for all your work and all that you've been doing to the district and all the awareness that you're bringing. Thank you.
Ms. Velez, I am, um, always impressed by your ability to have the heartbeat of our students and families, so kudos to you. Um, I'm going to, um, answer your question. I want to also give, um, Dr. Beta the opportunity to, um, to, to, to talk about the portion that I saw, um, um, Ms. Santiago clap about when you mentioned about the training, um, for school committee members and everything.
Um, Dr. Jennings and, and, um, just want to say thank you for your work. Uh, I know you've been, uh, this is hard work because the way, we had to organize a, a lot of focus groups and then you're looking at all this information and he just gave you highlights and it's a glance and it's not, um, the whole report where they're still actually working on it. And, um, you know, we have to do this because we have to look at ourselves in the mirror and say, how do we improve? And so we're, we're getting feedback. And, and I think the most powerful feedback, and Ms. Velez, you've talked about it, is from the students. And, you know, they're, they're honest voices and they tell the truth, and so we have to hear those voices. And so we are looking at it and saying, okay, how, how do, how do we improve? And, um, and so we have a lot, we have a lot of work to do. And as Dr. Jennings said, our first training district-wide, everyone received training on, um, the thirty-first. And, um, you were, I know Dr. Jennings was already receiving feedback about the training. And, um, we can definitely have the, um, people from New York Leadership Academy, um, come and work with school committee as well, so, um, thank you.
And I just wanted to just piggyback on the, the other And I just wanted to just piggyback on the- the other question you asked, Ms. Velez. Um the Equity Committee, the Equity Audit Team, um it will be um reconstituted um and- and- and added to helping, once again, I mentioned a- a collective development of our strategic plan, where many of the members will be on the strategic plan um process, which is, which will be using our equity audit findings to develop a multi-year equity and excellence plan for Chelsea Public Schools. And I- I- I do hope and pray that um many of our school committee members could be a part of that to- to lead this effort. I believe that um not only do I believe that many hands lighten the load, but I do believe that when we all put our hand in the work, that there'd be a collective accountability and ownership in this as well. Ms. Santiago, I see your hand as well.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Jennings, for your work. Um and like Dr. Beta said, I- I just had to take a pause when you mentioned October being the year. It does feel like it's been another year, um which is, which is great. Um and really thank you for listening and- and- and taking such critical issues like these. Um and really dedicated to that. And again, Dr. Beta, for really bringing Erin, you know, into our districts and- and this kind of work that's being done. Um I really wanted just to say that I sort of held back when I heard that you were, and you shared, you know, being a Ferguson, um lifting up Missouri, that really touched my heart. Um and I think that, you know, just the fact that we're, as a district, you know, really putting forward a plan that we're gonna implement and that there is, you know, leadership all around to really dive in further, gives me a lot of hope, you know, that- that we're leading in the right direction. Um so thank you again. I- I just, in the midst of a lot that's happening, there's- there's a lot of good work like this that- that we need to continue, you know, prioritizing. Um and in addition to that, I just was really struck by the quote um of somebody that talked about books and, you know, being able to teach them. And it just reminded me of, you know, um Mr. Jimenez proposed ethnic studies um and something that, you know, we feel very strongly about. Um just brings it back to center as well that, you know, when we're doing all of this across the board, um it just, it's really gonna make our district so, so much better. Um so thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Beta, it's back to you. Back to you and your auspices.
I don't know if anyone has any more comments or questions. Yes, I'll- I'll just say, um thank you, Dr. Jennings, for your work. And I know it's been continuous and um I'm just excited to see how uh we continue to work with everyone to uh make sure that we're providing the support to our staff and then um the support and the- and the teaching and learning that our students de- um deserves. And um we're just excited. Everyone is um open and um just kudos to you because um we um we pushed to have the training district-wide and uh I just want to thank you for that um accomplishment um just the other day. So great job, Dr. Jennings.
Thank you, Dr. Jennings. Um the report was, it was great to finally, after so many years of being on the school committee, um there's been so many changes. Twelve years ago, when- when I came into the school committee as a representative, this looked very different from how it looks right now. There's been so many advances, so many changes, so many steps forward. Um still so many to go. And to finally see this type of work being done is spectacular. And it makes me, it touches my heart, makes me very happy. And um I'm dying to see all- all that's yet to come. Thank you so much. Um and now we will move on to the report of the superintendent of schools. Dr. Beta?
You're muted, Dr. Beta.
Um I'm turning over to- to our personnel report. Normally, uh our personnel report is about one page long, but because it's the beginning of the year and we've had so many hires this summer, our personnel report is actually four pages long. Um due to Student Opportunity Act, we, again, as part of our vision and our budget, we- we hired many teachers, ESL, English Language Learn- uh um for ESL, Special Education, paraprofessionals for all of our first-grade classrooms. And so this is a whole, uh this really right here, this personnel report, I just want to make the connection, ties back to the Student Opportunity Act. So we hired an extra one hundred and ten employees this year. And thanks to the great work of all of our staff, our principals, our assistant principals, our HR department, um we started the school year about ninety percent filled and with all the additional hires and we've been working all summer. So I'm pleased to commend this personnel report for the record and the demographic data in all of the hundred and there's reflected about a hundred and sixty hires in this report. Of course, there's the natural turnover, retirement that we had to replace and um people leaving. But then there was about a hundred and ten, there was a hundred and ten new positions that we had to fill. So and of that, of all of those positions, um the demographic data for our hires was sixty percent Caucasian, twenty-eight percent his- um Hispanic, eight percent Black, and four percent Asian Pacific Islander. So there's that part of the report. Then we have our resignations and retirements. As you can see, they're normal um resignations, retirements, and terminations that we have at the end of the year into the summer. So here's this report as well. Um so with that said, I'd like to commend this report to the, for the record. And then the second report that I, we normally go over is enrollment. And this one is exciting because last year, as we ended the year, we had five thousand eight hundred and fifty students. And remember, I had always mentioned that enrollment was down. And our enrollment numbers are actually back up and we're at six thousand and forty-six. And we knew we would probably regain the students, and we certainly did. And we, as Ms. Velez knows, we are still enrolling students. So um I don't know what our final numbers are gonna be, but we have been extremely busy. Um as of today, we were at six thousand and forty-six. So that's about two hun- we're back up and it's two hundred more students than last year. And so I will go ahead and uh I know I- I saw a hand up. Um so um Mar- uh um remember Mar- um Marisol, I know you had a question?
Yes, Almi. Um thank you. Um so I wanted, this is a perfect opportunity just to, one, I wanted to really highlight the work. I think that I've had the opportunity to witness of Christine and under the leadership of the team, clearly all of you, um I keep echoing how proud I am about, you know, our paraprofessional program that was implemented. Um I think that's super critical to keep prioritizing, um you know, having our own paras from the community, a lot of them, right? Not saying exclusively, but when we do have paras that are from the community, you know, thinking that they're gonna become teachers and stay in our, in our district is- is a real big blessing. Um and I would hope that we continue to do that. Um in the last couple of weeks, uh you know, uh between an open house and just really seeing everybody in action, which was a lot of work preparing for our reopening here. Um a couple of teachers mentioned to me, hey, we're hiring paras. Do you know any paras? Um and um I've been also hearing how we're getting, you know, a ton of more students, um which again is a blessing, welcoming all and really grateful to be part of this district. Um but that also brings up to me, you know, just thinking about trends. Um usually between September, November, we still see those numbers climb. Um I feel like this year, I don't know if it's just because of COVID, right, and remote and, you know, certain grade levels that weren't available last year or the program that we had in place now, that shift. Um but, you know, thinking about going into the future and class sizes, I just have to bring that up, that we have to really watch that closely. Um you know, it would, eh, just with COVID alone, thinking of big classrooms, it's- it's a challenge for- for our students, for the teachers, and for parents. Um but also if we continue to see that trend, you know, that we're- we're taking that into consideration in our planning, you know? And I know that a lot of us have talked about buildings. You know, we all wish we could just bring a whole new building into existence. Um but where in the planning might that fall in a couple of years if we see that trend continue? Um so just thinking about that, I know we talked about it before, uh whether it is, you know, other spaces that we have and stuff like that. But um with all the new hires and with everything going on, um I just wanted to ask if, you know, if it's something that we can assist with um in terms of sharing, um and also just open the question around the percentages of the demographics of our new hires, like what are good recruitment practices that exist right now in place? You know, do we, is- is there any, anything that we could do, whether it's like, you know, sharing job descriptions to, whether it be universities or certain networks, like if there's any suggestions that you might have for us so we could be helpful? Um because you guys have clearly been doing a lot. Um and yeah, it's just, I always think about like, how are we not just hiring but attracting and recruiting talent, right? And then ultimately plugging them in and onboarding? So it's a lot to say for a short presentation, um but um it falls under this umbrella.
Thank you. I would just like to commend um the personnel report and enrollment report for the record.
Um I'd have a, it's a quick comment. Um just like to point out that this balance that we're seeing in enrollment is something that we expected, and yet the Department of Education and, well, really the legislature, uh not the, not the Department of Education, uh legislature should have probably foreseen this and given us kind of uh a way to- to make up some of that in- in funding, um given that our budget is now, you know, essentially missing these two hundred students that we foresaw coming. Um and many of us advocated um to the legislature to let them know that they should take them into account. Um so we will see what the final numbers are, but it's really shameful that, you know, we are kind of missing that- that funding for those students that we're really missing due to COVID and not due to any other reason. So, thank you.
I- I just would add that I don't think it's just because of COVID. Um you know, we're seeing a lot of disruption with climate change around the world right now. We're seeing a lot of disruption, um you know, from countries that are really facing some serious um challenges. Um and like I've said in previous meetings, um I think this is a beautiful thing that we have that when people do, you know, want to reach out and see where they have community, that they're choosing Chelsea. Um I just think for the long-term planning, these are, right, trends, you know, that- that um from what my understanding, we- we look at, I look at mobility all the time, um missing sour again, bringing her into the space. Um but you know, looking at mobility and looking at the jumps and when they occur, I- I'm just, I- I really feel strongly that it's something that we have to watch. Um and I think that goes into our planning, you know, for the long-term, which I know Dr. Beta, you're like always eyes on that. Um but, you know, here we are talking about equity and um inclusion, and I think this is gonna be, you know, a big part of that in the future. Um you know, we have a growing, I know that folks have said that in the past, for folks that have been here longer than me, we've seen, um you know, we heard concerns from people in the community that would say, what is it that our kids are in elementary school and then we get to middle school and we see a drop-off? You know, those are things that I look at, right, that- that tells us like, what does the five-year plan look like? And also how can we advocate, you know, to the state, to Roberto's point, right? Not just for funding, but also thinking about, is this a building, right? That needs to come into existence a lot sooner than- than we thought, you know? Um so just all those things sort of come up to my mind in- in this. Um and you know, the last, that last question that I had, if um Almi or Christine, if there's any way that we could support circulating job descriptions, if that's appropriate, we're sharing it with networks, like please let us know if- if we can, if that's helpful at some point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Marisol, if you would like, um we would love to connect you with Rashida because she does have a list of partners where she um advertises all of our job postings, so we would love all the help that we can get.
Great. Thank you, Christine. Yep.
And the- the nice thing about all of this is it ties back to equity, right, from the start, from our hiring practices. And um HR has done a phenomenal job of recruiting candidates of color, our parent-to, our parent-to-paraprofessional pipeline, our teacher-to-parapro- uh our paraprofessional-to-teacher pipeline, and our and uh teacher-to-administrator pipeline. So um we, you know, we- we have made a lot of strides and uh HR is small department, but mighty. And that's where it's part of our equity work and our new indicators, um success um indicators that we will be tied to the strategic plan. Um we'll have the HR indicators as well into, in. So I will introduce that to you at our school committee retreat, and then we'll start off with our new indicators. And um Marisol, you will get mobility rates um as before, um and so starting in October.
Thank you, Almi.
You're welcome. So I guess, let me get the agenda back up.
I'm sorry. Um next up is committee reports, I believe. Dr. Beta, you-
There's none.
There's none. When you were done with yours, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll move on to new business, as there is no un- committee reports or unfinished business. And we'll move straight into the new biz. Um first in line is consideration and action to accept the awarded allocations for the primary violence prevention adult education service comprehension, school health services, and innovation pathway implementation state grants for school year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two in total of eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. Um item number two-two SC zero-four. Explanation, the district has received continued funding from the Department of Public Health to address violence prevention, funding for adult education services, funding from the comprehensive school health services, health service grant, funding is provide, provided um for all costs of staff, professional development, grant-specific school, activity supplies, materials, students, transportation, and technology, and other expenses in support of the program. Mass General Laws, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Veronica, can you give us a roll call?
Consideration and action to accept the awarded allocation for the primary violence prevention, adult educational services, comprehensive school health services, and innovation pathway implementation state grants for school year two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two in a total of eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-five. Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlisle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
That's five in the affirmative and two absent.
Five in the affirmative and two absent. Motion passes. Next, consideration and action to accept the awarded allocations for multiple federal grants for school year two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two in a total of six million one hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars. Item number two-two SC zero-five. Explanation, Chelsea Hu- Public Schools- Explanation, Chelsea Public Schools are eligible for certain federal grants available to provide support in supplemental services for certain school populations. These grants are distributed to the, to, and then by the states to the eligible districts. Funding is provided for the cost of staff, benefits, professional development, grant, specific school activities, supplies, materials, technology and indirect costs and other costs in support of the program. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call, Veronica?
Consideration and action to accept the awarded allocations for multiple federal grants for school year two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two in a total of six million one hundred and seventy-one, eight hundred and forty-four dollars. Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative and two.
Five in the affirmative and two absent, motion passes. Moving on, consideration and action to accept one hundred and four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Accelerating Mathematics Instruction for Students Grant. Item number two-two S C zero-six. Explanation, this grant provides access to a digital conceptual mathematics program for summer two thousand twenty-one in the twenty-one, twenty-two year.
Conceptual.
I'm sorry, am I echoing?
I did it for a second and then it stopped, Anna.
Okay. School year for, for grades K through eight. The computer-based programs will deepen students' conceptional understanding of mathematical mathematics through a visually based approach, utilizing interactive, engaging and age-appropriate activities. Funds will be used for contracted services, licenses, material and professional development and other expenses in support of the program from DESI. Approved vendors, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for the educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call?
Consideration and action to accept a hundred and four thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the Accelerating Mathematics Instructions for Students Grant. Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative and two absent.
Five in the affirmative, two absent, motion passes. Moving on to the next, consideration and action to accept five thousand dollars from the Massachusetts Cultural Council through Seed Inc. for the Hooks Elementary School, item number two-two S C zero-seven. In closure, the Mass Cultural Council will pay five thousand dollars to science and engineering education development Seed Incorporated, which will provide hands-on science and fun activities for the Hook School, fourth grade. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call, Veronica, please?
Consideration and action to accept five thousand dollars from the Massachusetts Cultural Council through Seed Inc. For the Hooks Elementary School. Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
It's five in the affirmative and two absent.
Five in the affirmative and two absent, motion passes. Moving on to the next. Consideration and action to accept a private grant from the Chelsea Educational Fa- Foundation. A C Rat- Ratchinsky Foundation in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the I L P for school year two thousand twenty-one through two thousand twenty-two. Item number two-two S C O A. Funds have been awarded by the A C Ratchinsky. Um, I know I must be killing this name. Rocheski Foundation to support the intergenerational literacy program. Funds will be used for stipend, stipend student assistance, assistance. What's wrong with me now? Supplies and, uh, third expenses in support of the program. Massachusetts State General Laws, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for the educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call, Veronica?
Consideration and action to accept a private grant from the Chelsea Educational Foundation, A C Rocheski Foundation in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars for the I L P for school year twenty-one to twenty-two. Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez? Mr. Jimenez?
Sorry, my headphones just died. Uh, yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative and two absent.
Five in the affirmative and two absent, motion passes. Next one, consideration and action to accept the gift of school uniforms for middle schools, middle school students with an estimated value of five hundred dollars from the Chel-, from the Chelsea Rotary Club, item number two-two S C zero-nine. Explanation, the Chelsea Rotary has generously offered to provide a gift of school uniforms for middle school students with an estimated value of five hundred dollars. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven A, provides for the acceptance of grants for educational purposes only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call, Veronica?
Consideration and action to accept a gift of school uniforms for middle school students with an estimated value of five hundred dollars from the Chelsea Rotary Club. Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative and two absent.
Five in the affirmative, two action, two absent, motion passes. Moving on, um, next, consideration and action to accept the rec- recommendations, recommendation of the superintendent to approve a series of field trips to Mount Cardigan in New Hampshire for eight Chelsea Opportunity Academy students and two chaperones on. Are we missing?
Oh, I love, I think I left the dates out, um, for, for Saturdays in October.
I couldn't get it.
Saturday, October? Do we need the dates right now? Do we need the dates in order to proceed with this, to approve it?
They're in the, um, field trip attached and then closed, in the closures.
Okay. Um, okay. With the dates enclosed, um, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't need them in order to move on. Um.
Can, can we get the, the dates just listed or said out loud?
I am, I'm gonna get them.
Also, in mind, they give us these dates, but I know if there's inclement weather, it changes, so.
October sixth, two thousand twenty-one, returning on October seventh?
Thank you, Anna.
Okay, you're welcome. Um, consideration and action.
Sorry, and just, just for the record, there's four, there's four in there. Um, there's September thirtieth, October sixth, October twentieth and October thirteenth.
What were those dates again?
Uh, September thirtieth, October sixth, October thirteenth and October twentieth.
Okay, let me, let me start again from the beginning. Okay, um. Consideration and action, um, to accept the recommendation of superintendent to approve a series of field trips to Mount Cardigan in New Hampshire for eight Chelsea Opportunities Academy students and two chaperones on September thirtieth, October sixth, October thirteenth and October twentieth. Item number two-two S C ten. Explanation, this year the Chelsea Opportunities Academy is offering the opportunity for students to participate in the outdoor experience course, which provides students with the chance to learn more about hiking and camping. Out-of-state field trips must be approved by the school committee. Roll call, Veronica?
Consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve a series of field trips to Mount Cardigan in New Hampshire for eight Chelsea Opportunity, um, Academy students and two chaperones on September thirtieth, October sixth, October thirteenth and October twentieth. Ms. Santiago?
Um, it's a yes, but I, I just wanted to ask a quick question. I remember when, um, remember one year they did a presentation about this program and it's a wonderful program. Um, and the students came and spoke about how meaningful it was. Um, I mean, I just wasn't sure, is this, is this, eh, those eight students would go on all these weekends? Does the program run for a month or is it like a weekly thing? Um, but it's an absolute yes for me, please. I just, you can, you can save the question for the end if you'd like or, um, but I just wanted to get clarity on that.
Probably finish the roll call out and then answer the question.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, Veronica.
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Five in the affirmative and two absent.
Five in the affirmative and two absen, motion passes. Um, Marisol, you can repeat your question.
Yeah, thanks, Anna, and I probably should have waited to the end, but, um, I wa- I was, I was just saying that I remembered when they presented on this before, um, and how exciting it is to hear about this program and the experience our students are getting from this. Um, I was just curious to know if it's the same eight students that go or is this, you know, a rotation, like different eight students each weekend, or does the program run about a month? Um, and if anybody knows more about it that wanted to share real quick, but I, I, I still think it's extremely wonderful.
So, um, can you hear me? Just making sure. Um, so they, the program that, um, COA will partner with Youth Opportunity Program um, in the Appalachian Mountain Club. And so basically, they, they, they open up the, um, for people, anyone who wants to come. Um, well, and speaking with Mrs. Jimenez, he didn't, um, assure me because the concern I had was about, was regarding COVID, that they're following all protocols and, and COVID protocols and safety. And so this is throughout the year and the students, it's, if they, they often will take this, a group of students that's, um, that can go, um, that are able to go. A lot of COA students work, so it depends on who's available to go on the weekends. So it's not the same kids going all the time. Or it's not, it's not just a select group from COA that go, it's open to all. But again, their COA, a lot of them have, have children, a lot of them, a lot of students are working full-time, so some of them will take time off from work so that they can go. And so it's, it's open.
Thanks, Almi. That's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you for asking the question, the question, Marisol, also. Um, because I, I too remember when they discussed this program and it was, it was great. And that's good that everybody has an opportunity. It might not be the same people going, um, all the time. Um, but so they get, they are able to enjoy it. Um, with, if there's nothing else, if anybody, does anyone have any questions, anything else they'd like to ask before we adjourn?
I, I'd like to, oh, sorry.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Marisol.
Uh, forgive me, I didn't know someone had to hand up to, I should have waited. Um, I just wanted to say, yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna buckle this, Anna, under announcements.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. So I just wanted to just echo that, um, I think a lot of us are putting our best forward and returning back to school. Um, I try to say this pretty much in every school committee meeting that I know that if, um, if DESI would have allowed us to have a little more flexibility, I think that, um, we could have had a ton more options in making sure that kids return safely to school for the students that need to be in the building and for parents that still are, are, are experiencing a little bit of angst and concerns. Um, and I just really wanna acknowledge that and I really wanna send, um, you know, my best to parents that, that are making those decisions right now. Um, as a parent myself, I'm, I'm definitely feeling it. And that I know that, you know, we always make the public speaking section, um, open for people to come and participate if they have questions. Um, and reach out to your individual schools, of course, but, you know, this, this space is here for parents as well and that, you know, just wanna reiterate that. And lastly, that, um, you know, I did see that there were some questions about the Virtual Learning Academy. Um, and, and there were some great folks in the community that were sort of directing them to reach out to their individual principals if they wanted more information. Um, and so, you know, again, if, if folks have questions and they really wanna understand how that works, you know, to reach out, you know, to, to your school and your, your child's teacher and to the principal. I mean, obviously we're here as a resource, but the public speaking portion is a place where people can come, ask questions, share, you know, their experiences so that, um, you know, we can help support parents in, in their transition, you know, and, and bringing our kids, the kids back to school. Um, so yeah, I just really wanted to say that I know it was a emotional, wonderful day, seeing pictures per usual. Um, but understanding the tenderness around it as parents and what that means for us, so. You know, this is a space, our monthly meetings where parents can come and, and share. Um, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you all for the, the questions and the space today and the presentations.
Okay, um, can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Um, well, because my screen just went blank, so I can't, I can't see anything. Um, so, um, does anyone else have any other comments or, um, announcements they'd like to make?
I would like to make a comment, Ms. Hernandez. I just wanna tell everybody that I know it's a tough time, not just COVID, just other things that have been happening in the community. And like Ms. Santiago said, we are here for you to support you, to offer a safe space. Um, Dr. Bates and the team have made it very clear that, um, there's support within the schools for everything that's been going on. Um, you know, like always, we are a resilient community and faced with stuff, um, we overcome it. But sometimes it's just too much at times. Uh, but just remember that we're here for you, we're all in this together. Um, wishing everybody a safe and happy new school year. Um, let's take it one day at a time right now, that's all we could do and, um, we're glad that we're able to be back in the classroom, even though it's not the ideal way that we wanted to be back, but welcome back and, um, look forward to hopefully being at more events and seeing those smiling faces. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Velez, um, well, if no one else has anything else to say I'd say or announce, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, Anna, I'm sorry. Oh.
Who?
But.
Sorry, guys, there's a little lag, I'm realizing. I don't know if it's me, my apologies, that might have been tricky earlier too. Um, I just wanted to, to ask if Mr. Robinson, Counselor Robinson would share, um, I know we got an email about an event that the Latimer Society was hosting, and I unfortunately had a little trouble opening it and seeing it in the attachments. So I was hoping if we could just, if he would be willing to share about that event as well, the invitation.
Be happy to. First, I'd like to thank Veronica for getting the information out for us. We're celebrating Lois Latimer's 173rd birthday with two exhibits. The first one is at the Broadway Gallery. It's about Lois Latimer and Thomas Edison about the light bulb and their connection to the city of Chelsea. The second exhibit will be at Port Rock on September 10. It'll go up, it'll be up until October 10. The one at the gallery actually will be, is actually up, and it'll stay up until the end of September. We'd like to encourage everybody to get by and take a look at the exhibit. I think you'll be very impressed by what information is put out there in regards to Lois Latimer and Thomas Edison. So thank you for allowing me to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson, for sharing that with us. Anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
My second motion.
We are journeying at 8:23 PM.
Thank you, everyone.
Good evening, everyone.
Good night.